I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board May tenth, two thousand seventeen meeting. Memorial Town Hall, we're on the third floor. It's a few minutes after seven. We have minutes, vouchers, two correspondents, two public hearings, one that is continued, and then one item for Planning Board. So going back to the beginning, which is always a good place to start, go to the meeting minutes for April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
I move to approve the draft, April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, planning board minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Moving on to vouchers, we have two, one for Boston Systems and one for Land Law Publishers.
Put the motion to approve the voucher for Boston Systems in the amount of hundred and five dollars for the Planning Office print to repair.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Boston Systems Planning Office print to repair for a hundred and five dollars. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent.
And last motion, motion to approve the voucher for two hundred and fifteen dollars to Land Law Publishers for the two thousand seventeen online subscription to Land Court reporter.
Second. Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the voucher to Land Law Publishers in the amount of two hundred and fifteen dollars for two thousand seventeen online subscription to Land Court. Any discussion?
Have we had this subscription before?
I'm not aware of it, but is this new?
It, online it is, but they had the hard copy before. Now, this is the least expensive of the two.
I would guess more easily searched as well, just by the nature of databases. So cool. Good.
Do we need a code name to get onto it? Or is it accessible once?
Yeah, once, yeah, once we pay for it and I'll make sure that everybody has. What's really good about it is the most up-to-date.
I know, I've seen some of that. I just wondered if we needed a code or password, each and one of us?
Yeah.
We do.
It's the same.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Four yes, one absent. The vouchers are going around for signature. And when they come back to you, it's your signature. There are two items, Town of Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. There's no action required of the board. We have a request for the second item of correspondence for surety reduction for Turning Leaf of Georgetown. And John had approved, had drafted a motion for that request. I see the representative is here. If there are any questions or if you'd like to add, just add anything about it. Sure, come on on.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
No, we're just here to request the reduction of the bond is set forth in our, our letter and our dispersment certificate. And it, we, it's been approved by a meeting with Dave, Dave Farga and a representative of the developer.
And just for the record?
Yeah, Melissa Ogden from Man to Man for Turning Leaf.
Does anyone have any questions, discussions? Motion?
Approve, I, I move to approve the surety reduction request by Turning Leaf in the amount of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, which should be reduced, released from the tri-party agreement of record, entered with all of the information is set forth in the draft motion.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the surety reduction request by Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC. And said surety reduction is in the amount of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, which shall be released from the tripartite agreement of record, entered into on February twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen among Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC. What was that nice phrase you used to summarize the rest of that?
As set forth in the draft motion.
As said forth in the draft motion. Very nice. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent.
Nice one, close it down.
Do I have a copy? Are you going to be sending it?
Okay.
If you want to, an original, I can have Rob sign too.
Rob, do you want to bother signing these now and they're already executed?
Let me do that and it'll just, if the board doesn't mind.
Oh, I don't mind.
And I'll scan a copy and get it back to you and send you.
I like the way you put the remaining valence on there.
Right.
I had my chance.
Don't want to lose any of this stuff.
Right. I'm figuring.
Those eight, those nineteen, late eighties, early nineties still haunt a lot of people.
We got burnt. And so we'll get our.
Yeah, I can, I can have two of the new copy now and I'm going to notarize the signature signing freely and voluntarily.
Okay, so that takes care of the correspondence. For public hearings, we have two, we have Georgetown Plaza and then Georgetown Water Department. John, my understanding is?
Yeah, I'd like to explain in regard to Georgetown Plaza, the peer review is now underway with the Conservation Commission. That's expected to take possibly two to three months before conservation is through with that project. Maybe earlier, but that's what they're expecting now. The representative for Georgetown Plaza, Attorney Smolak, he's requested a continuance of this public hearing this evening for June fourteenth. And at that point, they, they may have the peer review back and they may have something to present to us that's different than what was already presented in the past. If, if that's okay with the board, there is a draft motion. For the reader of the motion, I'd like to provide a semicolon, colon at the end of the motion, said, to read, said hearing shall be continued to fourteen, June, two thousand seventeen, Planning Board meeting. Just forgot to include that.
Okay. One quick question, and I'm sorry, I never get this language right, but the things that we have to continue quarterly, the?
Form H.
Yes. Form H. Do we?
Yeah, we have that through September.
Great.
They got that executed.
You, what was that you wanted to add on to the draft?
It would be a semicolon at the end and for that to read after the semicolon, said hearing shall be continued to the fourteen, June, two thousand seventeen Planning Board meeting.
I move pursuant to the written request of the applicant's attorney, John Smolak, to continue the public hearing on the site plan application to amend the rear parking lot and outside storage area of the property located at sixty-four, seventy-four East Main Street, the Georgetown Plaza project to the June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen hearing at seven fifteen P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to accept the written request of the applicant's attorney, John Smolak, letter dated three May, two thousand seventeen, to continue the public hearing on the site plan application to amend the rear parking and outside storage area of the property located at sixty-four, seventy-four East Main Street, AKA the Georgetown Plaza. Said hearing to be continued to June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen's Planning Board meeting. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's just for that one. Do you need anything from us?
Uh, no.
Come on down, guys. Man, you're looking good tonight. Okay, so we need to open the public hearing for Georgetown Plaza. I mean, the Georgetown Water Department, please.
I think a motion that we open the Georgetown Water Tower hearing for a site approval.
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the Georgetown Water Department's site plan review for the water tower at eleven Long Hill Road. Any discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I think this is going to be pretty quick tonight.
It might be. I just want to point out that number three in the staff report, we do have correspondence, extensive correspondence from the ZBA. A lot of that was included in the comments report. And the building inspector also offered a zoning determination. And Steve in Conservation Commission did offer his comments also. That was left out of the staff report, but we did have three parties report to the board.
John, you have under, you have, you have in here suggested action on page two.
Yes.
Do we have to go through that again?
No, it's just, you know, it's a public hearing, anybody, you know, who wants to express any concerns after they give their presentation?
Yep, okay, I didn't know it was after application acceptance, okay. So with that, we'll go to the applicant and then you guys want to present?
Okay. Excellent. I mean, I think we'll try to keep it relatively brief. Obviously, we're proposing to construct a water storage tank on Long Hill. It's a project that's, was envisioned a long, long time ago. The land was purchased in nineteen seventy-seven specifically for this process and this project. And I guess where the future has arrived, so obviously we're following through on the processes that were required, given CBA approval on a special permit. There's no wetlands on the site, obviously it's at the top of a hill and so we don't have any resource issues. We're not creating any new runoff, everything, any runoff, it's, the pre and post runoff has been demonstrated in calculations to, to be equivalent. So there's no stormwater issues, everything's captured on the site. And the site essentially includes a water storage tank to be constructed on a wooded site and a gravel access road leading up to the site. I can flip the sheets and kind of just point out a few basic things. Not a whole lot of things that are grand and glorious about it.
Except for the people who live nearby who are going to be really happy to get good water pressure.
I believe so, yeah. I mean, I think there'll be some benefits for everybody, but localized certainly. So just generally explaining where it is, that what's known, it's the I ninety-five corridor. You know, our existing facilities are on the western side of town. If you follow the tiny street off East Main Street, across the highway, Long Hill goes up in the area where the, where all the existing cellular towers are, there's like two or three towers over that, metric to it, one near the bottom and two up on Long Hill, right, right, like adjacent, immediately adjacent to our site. That generally shows, you know, where the park is located. This is the existing site off of Long Hill Road. If you were to drive up there now, as you come up the hill, there's a few houses on the left that are set down, so that there's no kind of visible sightline to the, to the area. And then before you get to the larger part of the, of the developed area, you'd see a gravel road, that road actually leads into where the existing cell towers are. We have to construct our own gravel access road adjacent to it because we couldn't get access using their road. See the swamps left there, we're simply now that access. So that's the existing site. This area is roughly two hundred by two hundred. That's kind of a blow up of the site. So the nearest house sits like right in here. And then there's a, the person has a backyard, stone wall, and then this is all wooded. So the attempt here is to try to maintain some natural screening and then on the outside edge of the cleared area, put in a, a row of screening to kind of block the sightline of the base of the tank. I guess one thing to bear in mind is, is that the, in the summertime, once the vegetation comes in, there's a lot of screening in here, even from the backyard, and you'll be able to tell there's someone back there, but it's fairly well concealed given the sightline. Basically, the, the whole idea of this row of screening is basically to shield the base of the tank. Other houses are further away and down here. So sightline wise, really, there's only one rail of butter that would have correct view of the, of the base of the tank. This is the upper end of the road, of the gravel road leading back on the Long View, um, so Long Hill Road, Long View Way comes down this way and then they pull it up. That's what the tank looks like. A couple of things I wanted to point out is, from the base to the, the roof is a hundred and thirteen feet tall. I think the highest dimension is like a hundred and twenty. The, the height of the, uh, two cellular towers, I think one's a hundred and eighty-five feet and the other one's a hundred and ninety-three feet. So sightline wise, then it, the vantage points in there where we already see the cellular towers, so most of those same vantage points, you really wouldn't see the tank because it would be based upon its orientation and the tree line that exists. A lot of it's going to be hidden. The base of the tank is concrete and the upper, this is, this is basically hollow. The upper portion is steel and is painted so, so like a color that's very neutral, probably something with white or sky blue, probably put the color to your shirt, something like that. These other drawings of just existing tanks that we have now, this project is hotter than it is being prompted by the fact that we have a tank that was built in nineteen sixty. It's pretty much on its way out, so. The only other thing I thought might be interesting is that we have planted detailed chills when we're proposing for planning. Don't know how much more we can get in, I guess if you have some questions. The only lighting associate of the tank is, when you first drive up, it'll be a, you know, the motion light over the doorway to get into the base of the tank. And that's on the opposite side, and it's on the wooded side, facing away from where the houses are. So I think the only thing less intrusive would be the guy with the flashlight. I mean, it's, it's got to be pretty passive all the way around.
Is there any area where there are controls? Or, or not, I don't, I don't know.
The tank basically works passively. The water goes in when people, when they're pumping more water than people are using. It's basically controlled by level sensors. So there's a few smaller controls inside the tank. The tank is basically, the base of it is basically a glorified concrete shed, if you will. So there's like, you know, some control panels on there that record the level sensor in the, in the tank and some lighting information gets passed back to the treatment plant so the tank can tell us when it needs more water, that kind of thing. But all that stuff is inside, so there's really nothing, there's nothing really visible from the outside.
Before we bring it to the board, are you, are you all set?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's it, it's just.
Okay.
It's really not a whole, it's a water tank.
Is there anyone from the public that had any questions or if you could just introduce yourself? You could just introduce yourself to the record.
Sorry, Chris Wallace, and I tend Long Hill Road, so I realize I'm a little late to the discussion, but.
Can you show us where on the planned Long Hill Road is?
Sure, yeah, I'm opposite.
Are you, are you a direct to butter?
Nope. Kind of diagonal to it. So you said the actual butter's here, I'm right here.
Okay, thank you.
So Long View, Long View Road.
Are you on the corner?
Uh, no, I'm the White House at the intersection of Long View Way.
Okay.
Across, on the opposite side of Long Hill Road. From this, so I, like I said, I realize I'm a little late to the game here, but just curious, you mentioned it was, the land was purchased in the seventies.
Yes.
Development itself wasn't built until post that, right?
Correct.
Do you know when the cell phones towers were erected in the neighborhood?
I think they were put up sometime in the nineties.
That would be a safe guess.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to say. I mean, I, I used to do work for Cellular One, if you remember them, and that was, the big push was in the mid to late nineties, when a lot of that was going on.
I think there was one, the first one was Neptune, I believe. And then the other two was like ninety-five, ninety-six.
Yeah. I mean, so this on its, on its own, I don't, I guess I don't have an objection to. What I take a little bit of exception to is the maybe disproportionate number of infrastructure items in Long Hill Road, right? So we've got three cellphone towers and a water tank. You know, that to me seems a little bit disproportionate in terms of benefiting the town relative to potential health concerns on the, on the towers themselves, sightlines. I, I, I don't believe necessarily that I'm not going to see a hundred and fifteen-foot water tower. I have some concerns about kind of where the shadowing of that might, might or might not impact. It's shorter than the cellphone towers, but it's obviously more dense. So I, I guess my question to the, to the board is, is this predated the cellphone towers? Is there a kind of master planning that's happening that's taking into account successive things like this being installed in a short or condensed area? That's highly, that's a problem.
Anyone, anyone can jump in. We have a master plan, which is actually, it's reached its heyday this year, I think two thousand seventeen, we have to update it again. And we prepared it five years ago?
Ten.
Ten years ago? So, and in that master plan, I don't recall, I was on the board then when we drafted that, and I don't recall, again, jump in if anybody knows of it, I don't think there was any master planning per se of these kinds of utilities with a specific focus on those. I, I would say that this piece of land, when was it that you started this process and purchased this with this intent?
This piece of land was purchased in nineteen seventy-seven. It was purchased specifically for building this water tank. They started posting up there almost immediately signs saying, future home of Georgetown Water Tank. I think the only, the only downside of having it posted and waiting forty years to do it is people start to think that the sign is just a hoax or whatever, it's never going to happen. But I think we've been pretty upfront with the board's leadership, especially in the last three years, is that the, the time had come. And as you can tell, the condition of the, of one of the two concrete tanks on Ball Pay Hill, it, you know, it's, it, it's disintegrating fast, it's, it's in trouble. We've already made some restorative efforts towards extending the life of that, and I think we've gotten, we've gotten beyond its useful life and its design life, and now we're on kind of house money. But if something were to go wrong with the roof, then we're going to be in trouble because we can't have an uncovered water storage tank of finished water.
I mean, I, I, I think the, the planning for this particular item here, obviously, has been the works for a long time.
Agreed. I just try and bring it to the board's attention, just maybe.
Yeah.
Forty years has passed and there's been a number of other things installed and I, as far as cellphone tower, I don't, I'm not aware of any other cellphone towers in Georgetown?
Cellphone towers usually are privately owned, though. It's, that's not necessarily something that the, the town owns or receives the, the benefit of.
No.
Right? I mean, that's, so that's not a.
Are those on private properties?
Yeah. So I'm not sure that.
It requires a zoning variance, I would assume, right? Because.
There's not much you can do about the towers. I mean, even if the, the town did not like where they wanted to locate it, the federal, the state, you wouldn't have a chance.
And I think they locate them there for the reasons that it's a good place to put those for the.
Not of like the water tank.
Yeah, for the same reason. For the same reason.
That was my, would be my question to you. Is your water, you're satisfied as the water is today there?
I'm not, like I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to this particular project. I'm looking at it just in totality.
I think it's a good point, though. Yeah, in, in, in the near future, we're going to be probably talking a lot more about solar panels.
Yeah.
And we're going to be talking about windmills. And I think it is something that we probably want to have in the master plan for this reason, for this reason.
Yeah, and to answer your question, I'm, you know, I, I'm fine with the water pressure today, but I, I understand the need for the, for the town. I think we had a water, we had a problem with one of the tanks, not last year or the year before. I don't know if that was more mechanical, it wasn't the roof caving in, but, right?
Not, not with the tanks. We, we had an issue with one of the wells.
It was a well?
Yeah. The shaft seized up and we had to take that well offline.
So it's a well, but speaking to just the water infrastructure, I definitely, I understand the need for, you know, something built in the sixties, useful life is likely expired, so.
Yes.
Over on Ball Pay. So I, I totally understand that, I think it's. I think it's good for the town. And again, I'm just commenting in totality for the neighborhood how it's...
So I appreciate you coming here and then letting us know that. And Claude picked up on it for sure, so, thank you.
Michael Riden, Seven Long View Way, direct authority for the project.
Could you just point, or which is...
I'd probably be in the lower right-hand corner, if I had to guess.
Okay, you're the green, are you the green?
So this is, this house number right here is number, house number one. So I think it goes one, and then there's an easement here. The easement runs along the back wall of the house, and so it goes one, three, five, seven. And if you know Long View, not Long Hill, Long View.
That's correct.
So the road is, it's down fairly steep, but the odd numbered side of the road, there's kind of like a ridge line and the houses are set up relatively high. If you remember when it was built, they kind of cleared all the land and we had all that rain in October ninety-six and it all just came...
Good, Tim, to mirrors, great.
Now, the development was shut down four or five times during course of construction.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Due to the rain running.
Yeah.
One of my questions is, I understand the town purchased the land four years ago. But if you look at the law and you look at the requirements, a lot is undersized, under width, doesn't meet the street location, has driver's road frontage, which I don't care about road frontage. I actually approved the water tower idea. My problem is catastrophic failure, that thing lets go. I don't think you have a safety zone, a buffer zone that's required. I could be wrong, but just like putting a pool in at your house, you have to have a certain zone. You draw a circle around it, just like a well, a house, a septic system. When you put them all on a lock, you start drawing circles. I do not believe your water tower can form. I'm not sure if there is a circle that you have to draw around the water tower. As far as the safety zone, catastrophic flood, I believe the problem with the roof, you had to re-band the tower so the roof didn't collapse, correct?
Uh, that's on the concrete tank.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't care what kind of tank this is. When you put the tank in sixty years ago, that was latest and greatest, it was gonna last forever. This is latest and greatest, gonna last forever. I could die before it collapses. My family could still be there. The tank lets go, what's the town gonna do for me?
So, so topographically, um, what I would say is, is that the, uh, the land, um, obviously the tank is at a high point. There's a ridge line that the houses sit on, but most of the backyards kind of slope away. So there's a natural, there's a natural swell that exists behind all the houses that lead, um... It's drawn a little bit better here, I'm not sure if you can see it exactly, but this is a twenty-foot wide easement. So the houses are, you know, sort of here. And what happens is, is if you were to drain the tank, and I'm talking about like controlled drain through a hydrant or, or the overflow or, or, um, with, in, in any capacity of how we would drain it. First of all, if you were to try to drain the tank, we're gonna drain it in a slow and controlled way so it doesn't, you know, run away or, you know, wash away. The natural, the natural drainage swell that exists now would channelize the water away from the houses, not towards the houses. So while I understand the concern, I think the existing topography of the lots and the land leading there, um, I think is already such that, um, you know, it's, it's gonna be tapering away. If there was a, an initial, I'm trying to imagine this as a failure, it's welded steel and it's designed to withstand the weight of seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water.
It's a steel rust.
It, it does, but I mean...
Doesn't matter, steel rust, a weld rust, steel rust. Okay, the tank could collapse.
So the tank is coated so that the idea of it rusting and failing like that, I agree. If we constructed this thing, never coated the inside of it and then never inspected it...
Yeah, it's, it's not really realistic to, to say that you're gonna have imminent failure with this. It's designed and constructed to the American Water Works Association requirements. It's the case where we have requirements as to when we have to inspect the tank. We have requirements as for the maintenance that has to occur on the tank. Think about how many tanks are in service in Massachusetts at this time.
Can we get that maintenance point of that you have?
Sure, it's, it's required that every three years they have to be inspected. That's by the American Water Works Association.
So we can have it in our file, relieve the concern.
Your topographical map, I've lived here since day one when the subdivision was put in. And I had my lunch certified, you master grading print, the town made everybody go through. I jumped through all kinds of hoops to do it, okay? If you get a heavy rain, my backyard burns up, I'm all master grading. My septic system probably gets three inches of water on top of it. Heavy rain, heavy snow, we get the floodings, specifically probably what was if my son then poor? Maybe eight years ago, we get some really heavy, heavy downpours, you got serious flooding in, I think it was April. And I'm gonna tell you, my, my, my septic system, my leach field, had three inches of standing water on it, which is exactly where you're talking about, Joe. Top of print, dumping out, right there, within about a twenty foot distance of my septic, my leach field. Okay?
Do you, do you...
I know where the drainage is.
Do, do you have any of the topo versus words that could, that we could talk to about this issue, about this question?
Yeah, I think we, we could probably locate some USGS topo, but we haven't, we haven't had things surveyed through here. Is it, what we're talking about is in the backs of people's yards?
Well, why would we? We, we have a, a report that shows that every drop of rain that's landing on our site is remaining on our site. So we've done the stormwater calculations.
No, yeah, for the stormwater calculations, but it's just, it's just addressing the issue of if, if there was a failure.
Yeah, I, I think we're going down the wrong path on the failure.
Well, I think our job is to first listen and to have dialogue. And that's what we're doing right now.
True.
And, and my other issue is the screening, which is posing, if I, I'm asking, can we do something more? I mean, we're talking about screening a twenty-foot concrete base, how big's the base?
Forty-foot diameter.
Forty, forty-foot diameter, how it off?
Uh, hundred and thirteen feet.
The concrete base is a hundred and thirteen feet?
Uh, the height from the base to the...
From the ground to the top of the base, but we just got the steel, steel, steel tank. What is the height of the concrete base that we are trying to screen? You're telling me we're not trying to screen the tank?
What I, okay, timeout. What I, what I, what I'd like to try to do is avoid like this dialogue. And if you have a question, to just ask the question so we can, because it's just gonna, we're just starting to go back and forth and it's hard.
My question is, is on the screening.
Yeah.
At what height is the screening gonna be to the height of the concrete base that we're trying to hide? Why are we planting for trees? Why are we planting for a screening base?
Okay.
Can we improve it? Can we make it higher?
We're not...
Can you explain what the planning is?
We're not proposing, we're not proposing to screen the whole tank. We have a, we, we have a, an area that we're not clearing, so there will be a wooded area between the, the tank site and house sites.
Can you refer to a plan where, where that is?
So, the, um... The home for house number one, Long View Way, is basically right here. And they have a backyard area. The screening here is designed, if you're in the backyard, looking through the tree line in the wintertime, when some of the foliage is off, that you're not staring at the base of the tank, the average height person. Now, if you look up, then yes, I guess you're gonna be able to see above the arbovites, but at some point you'll be looking at the, sort of the, the underside of the cambia trees.
Can, can you tell me what the, what the height of those arbovites are when they go in?
Detail that we have here is eight foot. No, I'm sorry. The stakes are eight foot. I would say probably fifteen feet.
Okay, and what kind of arbovites are they? That's, that's a...
I think it's, I think it's actually in the, it's actually in the specifications, not on, I don't see it on the...
They're not on the drawing?
Yeah. It's in, it would be in the construction specifications that go with the job.
All right, now you asked that maybe we could increase the size of the arbovites when we get a spade tree digger and we put a forty-foot arbovites in instead of an eight-foot Home Depot special? Something that's actually gonna block the side of the tower?
I, I think the, the, the screening that you're referring to right now is immediately adjacent to the nearest neighbor. The screening that will exist further away from any additional houses will be other houses and the wooded area behind those houses. So I guess the orientation, and I'm gonna talk specifically about where this gentleman's house, I believe, is, and then you can kind of superimpose your way back. So I think it's not this house, it's, so, house one, three, five, seven. So this gentleman's never gonna see the base of the tank. He may be able to go in his backyard and look up and see the top of the tank. And for that, we're, I mean, we're, we're not, we're not, we're not installing new trees or whatever. But I think sightline wise, that may not even exist either. Because I think when you look up, what you'll really be still seeing is the hundred and ninety-three foot cell tower beyond it. Vantage wa, I mean, I didn't walk through people's backyard, so I don't, I don't have the...
What, what is the rough height of that existing wood, woods? Do you know?
I, I wanna say a hundred or a hundred and ten feet, something along those lines.
As, as I recall, uh, on where about you live, the views are the, the other side of your house. The views are facing Boston. Sometimes if you go down the bottom of that...
I'll agree with you. If I wanted to look at the view of Boston, that's great. But if I wanna look at the view of my swimming pool, and I wanna sit in my backyard in my swimming pool, I'm looking diagonally. Okay? Here's my view.
You're in, yeah, okay, you're in the pool.
I'm in my pool, that's my view.
I, I don't...
I have no screening.
I think I, I think I disagree with that. I think I disagree with that. If your, if your house number seven...
I'm down, down here, yeah. I'm down in here.
This is, this is house number three.
Okay, but my view is still this. Whether, whether it's this or it's this, this is my view. There's no screening whatsoever.
There's no tree section?
Can you see the top?
It's not forested? There's, there's no, it's forested?
When you're, when you're talking forested, yeah, listen, it, does, does the scrubs, do they fill in in the summertime? Yes, they do. We're talking about screening for wintertime, when the, when the leaves fall off the trees.
In your pool?
Whether I'm in my pool or I'm sitting in my kitchen window.
Yeah, I mean, just to, just to piggyback on that, I'm, I'm looking out my front window at the sun, so I'm looking at...
Timeout, this is exactly what I want to avoid. This is exactly, no, no. This is, no, no. This is exactly what I want to avoid. We're not gonna just start jumping in and having this kind of...
Can I, can I just sum it in?
You haven't been observed, you haven't been called on yet, really. So try to keep it to the question and what the question was...
Screening.
Right.
I'm asking, can we improve the screening? Instead of just the screening go here, can we improve the screening to maybe turn the corner? You know, can we get some real trees instead of some eight-foot Home Depot version trees? Can we get some forty-foot trees? We bring in a big spade bit, and it goes like this, takes a scoop out, they take the crane, they pluck the tree in, it's forty-foot tall. It looks like it's been there since day one. Okay, I've seen it done, I've been on plenty of developments that do it.
So what, what I would chime in, in response to that, Lou, did I hear you say that the arbovites are fifteen feet when they're going in?
Yeah, I'm estimating it based upon the detail. The detail's not drawn to scale, but there's a reference to an eight-foot stake next to a tree that's drawn twice as tall, so I'm guessing it's more than fifteen feet.
All right, and that, that...
We'd be happy to put something...
What I was gonna, what I, what I was gonna say is that, um, fif, a fifteen-foot arbovite, um, in, in a traditional sense from a nursery for an immediate screen, in the industry is actually considered a very healthy screen. The idea of spading, um, you know, a, an eighteen-inch caliper, you know, forty-foot evergreen tree is something that, um... The cost associated with those is one issue. The, um, the guarantee associated with those is another issue. And in fact, the, uh, livability under certain conditions, if it's a nice, uh, soil condition, if it's a nice environment to bring a large tree that's very old in, that's one thing. But when you get into a condition like this, you're almost better off bringing in plants that are younger, that can start to grow in those environments versus a tree that's already developed all of its, for lack of a better term, personal characteristics, and then it gets shocked in this new environment.
I understand that for all of the town.
So what I'm, so what I'm hearing is you, you, you're, you're looking for some understory planting in the back.
I'm looking for something to hide it, that's all.
Some understory planting in the back, so...
And, and regards to his general issue of the master grading print...
Well, we'll, we'll come back to that. I wanna stay on the one point first, please, so we can resolve this.
Okay, but it all has to do with the screening, okay? With regards to his issue of the master grading print, you approved Mira Construction Project to put a hundred and ninety units right there, okay? The trees lose their leaves, I sit there and I stare at a hundred and ninety arbovites. You let them go in because it capped us off on the forty feet permit. I understand, it put the town over their limit, it put you guys out of lawsuits, about six other projects at the time, I believe it was. One of them stood the, the old junkyard, everything else, I don't care, okay?
Then let's not even talk about that, stick to the question.
Can we do something with some screening to hide it? That's all.
So that's what I was, so that's what I started to say to offer your question, and then you said you wanna go off and talk about some stuff, so...
I understand a twelve-foot tree is a healthy tree, but I also understand when you plant a tree, you buy a tree, you plant a tree, it takes it three years before it even starts to grow.
Okay, so we've, we've got...
And then a twelve-year tree, I'm gonna be sixty by the time the thing even starts to grow. And Tilly, I know your role to the man, I don't mean any disrespect, but honestly...
Okay, I think enough, sir.
How long would it take for you to get taller?
Enough, enough, okay? Um, so the two issues I've heard from you were screening underneath. Lou, what I think, and the board, correct me, it seems like carrying an understory planting of arbovite or whatever that plant needs to be for that particular environment is a reasonable request. And then you have, um, uh, that would be one thing that we'd wanna add to the, to the drawing. And then the other issue, what was the other issue we were talking about from the beginning?
The, uh, that it's an undersized lot and catastrophic failure with the drainage.
Oh, the catastrophic failure issue.
Which is the bigger issue, in my opinion.
Can you, can you just generate a, a plan, the USGS, that just shows where this water would go? You know, a USGS topo of where this water would go?
Um, I, I believe we can. I think the question is, is how up-to-date USGS is and how much detail there is.
Understand.
You know, if the area hasn't been redone, and I don't know the last day even, I think the neighborhood is older than the last year.
Has there ever been a catastrophic failure of one of these things in Massachusetts in the last thirty years? I mean, that, that...
I think the last tank failure that people talk about, they put molasses in a water tank, and the density of it, and it was in nineteen sixty.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of it. It was, it was clearly a lack of ungeneric knowledge at the time, and you can still smell the molasses.
The likelihood of failure is...
So we could, every project that comes before us, we could say, well, you know, if this building blew up, uh, is it going to, uh, light my house on fire three, three, three blocks away? We could ask any type of hypothetical and ask for every type of proof to, to show that the hypothetical is not gonna take place. I think the burden is on the person that's asking for that, those types of things to show that that's an actual real concern. I think that the fact that this doesn't happen, hasn't happened, and probably frankly, has never happened, uh, that to me says that this applicant shouldn't have to go through those steps, so...
Okay, and to, to that, what you just said, which is very helpful, Tilly, your request of getting and writing a copy of what this maintenance report is...
Right.
That assures the town, you look at this on a regular basis so that this would be avoided, um, would be another requirement.
I mean, I, I think in general that what Jeff is referring to is...
It's a D, it's the D one hundred standard for American Water Works, for the operation maintenance as well as the construction of these tanks. So it, it's a, it's a, you know, universal standard that, all across America that we use for design of these and for maintenance of them.
Where's the nearest one to Georgetown that you have elsewhere?
A tank? We have two other tanks in Georgetown.
I mean, like this?
Like this one specific?
Like this one specifically?
Right.
Salisbury, right near the beach.
Right near the beach in Salisbury. There's one in the, the Boulderwood, um, complex that's, uh, in South Peabody. They just put one in a couple of years back. Um, there, there's, one's even closer.
Yeah. Can I ask one more question?
No, time, no, not right now, sorry.
Just put one in in P's and Portsmouth.
Okay.
Just last year, they finished that one.
There's another one in Lawrence that you can see right off of four ninety-five, but that construction is all steel. This is a concrete base and a steel vault. Similar hydraulic concept, but different material construction.
So it, so I, I, so you had another question, if it's a new question, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go over the same stuff.
It's, it's regarding to Matt saying that it should be my responsibility to have a taco map and flood engineering done.
That's not what I said, actually, sir. What I said, sir, is that if you have a concern like that, it should be on your burden to come to us and say that this is a legitimate concern. And not just a hypothetical situation.
It's not a hypothetical situation, he's talking about letting, draining the tank at some point.
No, actually, sir, it is a hypothetical situation when you talk about a catastrophic failure of something like this that's never actually occurred. So that's a hypothetical concern, not a realistic concern.
Draining of the tank would be done, first of all, we have no intention of draining the tank, that's like, that's like giving away all the groceries in the store. We need that water we pay to make and we, we use it. If we had to, there's an overflow that exists in the, in the, you know, in, in, if you had to, if you pump more water, um, it's sort of a fail safe. But there's all, there's all controls built into the system that prevent that from happening. Where we need to drain the tank or take the tank offline, what we would do is use all the water in the tank, and instead of throwing it away. And if we had to take the tank offline and we needed to get rid of any additional water at the bottom of the tank, because the water exists at various elevations and deliver various pressures that go with it. As the tank level was down, just like a scuba diver, the less water above you, the lower the pressure is. We would then just meter that out in a gradual way, again, you know, through a hydrant or we have got like a two inch blow off line that would meter the water out in a controlled fashion so that it wouldn't turn into a, you know, runaway.
Sir?
Okay, just two quick questions unrelated to this. Uh, one might, just from my education, a hundred and thirteen foot high tower versus something of design like Ballpate? Is that a technological difference? Is it based on the site that you're putting it on? I guess my question is why a hundred and thirteen feet in the air when you're already on top of the hill?
That's, it's a good question. Um, so essentially, in Georgetown, your water pressure comes from elevation. It's the overflow elevation of that Ballpate tank. So as you take that and you draw a straight line elevationally wise directly across to your house, a long hill, and then the ground surface, that represents a hundred and thirteen feet. So it's our existing, if we have to match that other one, yeah, so that's how that happens.
Yeah, I think the elevation, I think the elevation of, of this site is about ninety-five feet lower than the elevation of Ballpate Hill, which means-
Where, where we are on Ballpate, 'cause we're not on the top.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. So from that site-
Yep.
We have a twenty-five foot tank, when over here we need a hundred and twenty foot tank. It's a hundred and thirteen feet to the, actually, no.
So there's, there's not much wiggle room on, what Lou's trying to say is there's no wiggle room on the, um, on the tank elevation, 'cause it has to match the other.
If you put the tank down the hill, you'd make the tank taller.
That's right.
Because you gotta meet the line that Jeff has referred to.
Yeah.
Can I just ask something? Well, Pete, you refer to them, we have to be a certain height above that?
Excuse, excuse me, uh, we were with this gentleman, you had another question?
So that was, that was, thank you for that explanation.
That was set.
That, I have one other question, though, is-
So finish, go ahead.
Are there infrastructure, road, um, improvements being contemplated as part of this? Not the access roads, but to Long Hill Road? With having machinery coming up and down, it's, the road's already falling apart, so has, has that been considered?
No, it hasn't been considered. It, it's a town road and it's, um, you know, it's a case where we're bringing in, uh, you know, a, a couple of tractor trailers, but the, it's, it's really not a, a construction site like we're building a high rise. There's not, you know, materials coming in, we're not furnishing it, there's no doors, there's no windows, it's not, you know, we're, we're laying down some concrete, we're putting in some, some steel, and then we're done. So it's not something that's in a, considered a, a burden to, you know, to the, uh, the, the existing infrastructure, the roadway.
The water department operates underneath the Board of Water Commissioners, which is separate from the highway department. The town doesn't have a DPW structure, so our money is dedicated to an enterprise fund that comes from rates, whereas the highway department comes from the general fund. The highway department has a pavement management plan, and so all the paving that you see Peter Durkey undertaking in the last few years is all following a pavement management plan that seeks to maximize the money that they have to get the most bang for your buck. A road like, e- every road's been rated, so it'd be very easy to figure out what the rating on this particular road is and what the intention is. Um, I agree with Jeff, I don't think the, I don't think the, the limited construction vehicles on this are gonna be what takes the road from its current condition to complete failure. Like any road, you drive on it and it incrementally, you know, deteriorates over time. But the town has a pavement management plan to address that when the road condition gets to a condition where it's requi- where, where it gets on the, sort of the next road to be done. And if you look now, what the town is doing is they basically have dealt with all the major roads that get the highest number of, you know, vehicle trips. A road like this sees traffic from the neighborhood, so it's less down on the priority list, but it will get, be, be gotten to at some point.
So that really should be a condition, perhaps, that we add, that if the road gets damaged due to the construction of the water tank, they will repair it?
I'm pretty sure Peter Durkey's gonna require that no matter what. I mean, you can make it a condition, but we're not gonna damage it, and if we do-
Okay.
Actually, the contractor's gonna be responsible for that because they're-
Absolutely.
And that's built in those specifications, too. I mean, I think that's, I, I think we're covered there, but you certainly can make it a condition.
So just to close a loop on that, how would I access that road plan?
Okay, answer?
Yeah, I'm just curious where, where the street falls in terms of priority level?
Talk to the highway department.
I actually have a-
The highway department?
Highway department would have a-
Comes through Durkey.
Peter Durkey. Okay, uh, anything else? Last, last, last go around? Okay, so I guess what I've heard, correct me if I'm wrong, um, we're talking about adding more understory underneath, um, on the plans. We're talking about indicating the size of the evergreens on the plan. A condition on the plan.
Is there a specific type of planting that you prefer? I, again, I don't, I don't have the spec in front of me, but I don't know what the specific one is, but if we're gonna plant something, we'll be happy to plant something that the board feels comfortable with, so.
Short of going out there and walking it, Lou, I'd be remiss to suggest a plant, yeah. But, um-
I think it's interesting, I, you gave us very detailed plans, but, uh, I, my guess is there's a lot of ledge over there. Will anything grow as far as forty foot trees?
The back of the spec has a geotechnical report where they actually did three borings, which is typical when you do a ring foundation basically to determine the load bearing capacity of the, of the site to build the tank. And, um, they were down a fair distance, uh, I'd be pulling a number off the top of my head to say otherwise, but there's no, it's not ledge at the surface. I think this is-
It's good enough to support existing hundred foot high trees, so-
Yes, yes.
There's gotta be some gravel there.
Yes, yeah, and I, I'm sure the, the leaf matter and everything has built some decent organic material there over time, so. And I think the spec will have, you know, some soil amendment that goes with the plantings, whatever, you know, so don't take a holt, drop it in, so there'll be a requirement there to plant them properly. The, um, the wraparound would go to a point where we get to where the overflow is, so I think the wraparound is gonna extend to a point about here, which gives the angle that I think the gentleman's referring to. You get to the backside here, all you're doing is screening the tank from the radio towers when, when you're here.
Lou, I, I, um, if you can make those a staggered row versus just a straight row, it'll be a lot more effective screening.
Sure.
That'll, that'll, it'll look, it'll look a little more natural, yeah. Um, any, any board questions? So, um, I think the, the only question I had was, uh, John, you had mentioned that the exterior lighting fixtures are, are not on the plan?
Yeah, I, I couldn't find them. The one light you're talking about over the door.
Yeah, I was looking at the drawing and it's on the lighting schedule, they need to add the number right there, yeah.
Okay, so I, I don't have any more questions. Um, what would the board's pleasure be in terms of, um, a motion?
We, we probably need to accept the, uh, site plan application first, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We do that?
Oh. I move to accept the site plan application calling for the construction of an elevated seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand, I assume that's gallon?
Correct, yeah.
Gallon water tower at eleven Long Hill Road, located in the one B zoning district as shown on the assessors map lot fifteen as, assessors map fifteen as lot forty-nine.
Second? Uh, motion has been made and it's been seconded to accept the site plan application calling for the construction of an elevated seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon water tower at eleven Long Hill Road, located in the IB zoning district and as shown on assessors map fifteen as lot fifty-nine. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we the only, we're not the only ones that still need to sign off on this, correct?
ZBA already approved it, uh, that was last week's meeting, and, um, we would be the-
We're it.
The remaining local body-
Okay.
To sign on.
So the only thing that needs to change on these, there are a few minor changes on the plan, can we do a-
Contingent upon, do, do, do.
Yeah. I'm not sure that I have good enough notes to do the motion, uh, if-
So what if, um-
I, I could suggest, I could, Mr. Chairman, um, I did hand out tonight, uh, a draft motion that makes reference to the long document. Um, so if you wanted to make immediate, um, reference to it, it's in the draft motion. Does everybody have a coffee, a copy of that?
Just this one page here, that's handed out separately?
Yeah. And that makes, in my opinion, sufficient reference to the ten-page approval document that would be signed.
I do have a question, I'm a plan. If I may ask?
Yeah, please.
You had, um, antenna? Is that for airplanes or what was that for?
Um, this, this some, there's some, uh, mountings available there to, um, we need to have an antenna that transmits information back from, we, we send signal to our SCADA system back at the treatment plant via, via radio signal with antennas. It's not dumb. Some communities use cell, cellular, some communities use, uh, telephone. This is, all our facilities are done by, by, uh, by radio.
Gotcha, thank you.
So John, were, were you, were you saying that, um, the draft motion that you handed out, we could use that?
Yeah.
Right, and we can add these minor items to that?
Correct, yeah.
So the, the, the minor items, um, that we would be adding is additional screening? Um-
Staggering a screening?
Uh, staggered and indicating height.
A maintenance plan.
That was the plant, that was the planting and then the maintenance plan.
The maintenance plan.
And then providing us, there was some additions on the, on the plans that you wanted, right, with the, uh, the light detail, or is that what?
No, he, he, he said, he's gotta add that on.
He does have to add that?
Yeah, it's the, the lighting, it, the lighting schedule includes it. They basically have to draw the number four in a octagon and put it next to the door. And it's, it's already marked up back in my office, I just, I happened to notice it.
You can add that, it's not gonna hurt if you want.
I don't think there was even any intention of putting a light outside, but the idea that it would be viewed as bad and we realize that it's on the other side or whatever, so obviously you need to have some lighting when you first walk up.
And, and those are the only items, Matt, and, and the one question that I did wanna, 'cause this was important, so the, the director butters, the, the, everybody's on board, you've talked with everybody and-
I originally, but before the, before we actually sent a surveyor out there, I, I actually reached out to the director butter and the butters, two houses on either side. At the time, I felt as though that was sort of the limits of where the sightline is. Uh, the gentleman that's raised the issue is the next house over, and that's the reason why I didn't go up and knock on his door. So I've made an attempt to actually speak to them. Of the five folks, I actually spoke to four of them. And I don't think, I don't think anybody expressed any real objections. I think they all understood with the sign there saying there'll be a water tank here and it's been there forever, that I, I think they all kind of assumed that it would be a foregone conclusion. Um, I think they just hoped that, you know, we would try to do something to screen it as best we can, and then again, that's why we showed the direct. Um, if I thought the sightline was different to other properties, we certainly would have added more. I kinda felt like that was as much as would do any real good. Adding some more really doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really change a whole lot, in our opinion, as far as cost. It would be nice to be able to mitigate some of the concerns of a neighbor or the butter, so, you know, it's kind of, it's an easy thing to do.
So we've already gotten a legal ad and we've already gotten the butters list? We've gotten the green cards?
Yep.
For all the butters?
Yep, everything has been, uh, properly advertised.
Right, um, unless there's anybody else, anything else, I'll make, take a stab at the motion.
The, the one thing, uh, was the condition about the, the, the roads in front of it, that if there's any damage, they will, oh.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, um, wh- what was the issue with the topography? Did you want them to include that as an amended sheet?
No, no.
Hearing no other comments, I'll make, take a stab at the motion. Uh, I move to approve the proposed Georgetown Water Department Long Hill Road Water Tower, lo- located eleven Long Hill Road, map fifteen, lot forty-nine A, Georgetown, Mass. In accordance with the attached certificate of vote and site plan approval with conditions dated November, uh, dated May tenth, two thousand seventeen, and endorsed by the planning board on said date, with the following additions, that the landscape plan be amended to stagger and enlarge the screening area, uh, along the, uh, Longview Way residential neighborhood-
Abutting.
Abutting, I, I was wondering what that word was that you had there. Uh, that the, uh, that the applicant will provide the three-year maintenance plan that was referenced in today's meeting. That the lighting schedule will include the exterior light, uh, and that, uh, any damage done to the road, uh, as a result of the construction, um, will be, uh, taken care of and, and corrected by the applicant.
Second?
Could, could I just ask him to, if you're talking about the screening, if you could refer to along the southeastern perimeter of the tank? I think the wording was through the neighborhood or whatever, and I don't want that to sort of expand into all kinds of additional-
So, so move, does anybody mind if we, you know, repeat it?
I've got that. Additional southeast screening, southeast screening. Uh, was there a second?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, so the motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the proposed Georgetown Water Department Long Hill Road Water Tower located at eleven Long Hill Road, map fifteen, lot forty-nine A, Georgetown, Mass, in accordance with the attached certificate of vote and the site plan approval with conditions dated ten May, two thousand seventeen, endorsed by the planning board with the following additions. Additional staggered screening in the southeastern location of the property with plant height identified. Two, provide the long-term maintenance plan for the facility. Three, add the exterior light legend to the plan. And four, fix any public road damage that may be occurred. Um, I think that was it. Uh, s- any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Thanks, guys.
Good.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you.
It's been a long haul.
It's very much needed and, uh, a long time coming.
Yeah, John, do you, should we go through this tonight, or?
If the board wants to go through it, um, and read it, make reference to it, otherwise, um, it is ready for execution. We, unless you wanna do that, it'll-
Unless you want to do that, it'll later time.
Do we need to incorporate these four pieces into this or is it already there?
Not specifically those four items, but they could be included as an exhibit A.
So, let me ask you, are we holding them up by not doing this tonight?
No. No, you know what? The thing is, we could, we could execute it properly tonight. We have the four people here and then we can just make reference to exhibit B. Or I could run downstairs and incorporate those into the
How do we make reference to exhibit B on this document?
Yeah. You know, if you guys want to talk for a little bit when we adjourn, I can run downstairs and add those and just print it right out.
Okay.
All right.
Do you guys want to do that?
I just, instead of getting this all down to the police station to sign
Yeah, no, we're talking 10 minutes total to
I'm trying to use those keys real quick.
Well, why, why don't we, you want
Take a recess.
Five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Or do we want to talk about, I'm sorry, do we want to talk about Terry when John's down there or do we want John for that?
I think John being
Very good.
So, we're going to take a five-minute recess, please. Thank you.
It's not on the signature page, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, we're going to, we're going to need, okay, we're back on. Thank you.
Is that for everybody, the copy or that?
Everybody has
Any of this?
Except for
Number four. If you want to pass that down.
You may want to read it aloud. It's just the four items that were discussed tonight.
So, what was added to
This is the decision.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was more of this.
Which are the ones you added?
Next page.
Next page.
Yeah. Number four.
E, F, G, H?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just for the record, the four items that were added to the order of condition under construction operation were four new items and they read, E, the landscape plan included in the plan of record shall be amended to enlarge and stagger the plant's screening along the southeast border of the site. Said plan amendments shall also include the size of species at the time of planting. F, the applicant shall submit for the planning board's permanent file on this project a three-year maintenance plan for the water tower, which as described by the applicant is the industry standard maintenance plan for such water towers. G, the planned lighting schedule shall be modified to accurately depict location and roomings cast for the proposed exterior lighting located above the maintenance entrance door of the tower. And H, the applicant shall be responsible for all road repairs that may be needed on Long Hill Road resulting from the construction of the tower. So, those were the four that were added to what we have as the Georgetown Water Department Longview, Long, Long Hill Road Water Storage Tank, 11 Hill Road, map 15, lot 8, lot 49A, certificate of vote and site plan approval with conditions. We need to, we have, we need signatures on this, so we need a motion to approve and sign.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the conditions as identified on the May 10th, 2017 certificate of vote, site plan approval with conditions. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Four yes, one absent. I'm going to sign and then pass it around. Thank you for doing that, John. You go this way. You always get it last. Fair. So, then we have two items left on the agenda. One is to review the complete streets policy, planning office, and then brief discussion and the planning board item. So, John?
Okay. Everybody received a copy of the proposed complete streets policy that was drafted recently working with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission staff and also working with Pete Jerky in the DPW. This is one of the three steps needed to be completed by the town relative to ultimately becoming a complete streets program certified community. This policy is scheduled to be heard by the Board of Selectmen and hopefully approved by the Board of Selectmen at their 22nd May 2017 meeting, which will also coincide with our joint meeting that we have scheduled with the Board of Selectmen and that's on the moratorium concerns regarding marijuana.
Right.
And after this policy is approved and forwarded to Mass DOT, the next and final step for the certification for the complete streets is developing prioritization plan and that's being worked on right now as we speak by Pete Jerky, you know, going through the checklist of road improvements, sidewalk improvements that coincide with this particular program. program. Ultimately, it can lead to upwards of four hundred thousand dollars initially in road improvement funds that are based on federal and state highway funding through DOT. I did hand out for tonight...
John, would downtown, would the streets downtown and the sidewalks there, would that potentially be part of something like this?
Yeah, whatever, whatever needs to be modified downtown would be an important part of this, especially with the pedestrian corridors leading to and from the schools. I know a lot of work has already been done, but actually along East Main Street and the sidewalks leading out of town towards ninety-five, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that existing sidewalk.
The whole town though, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not just gonna go.
Right, it's, it's the existing town. If you read through the policy, it's with a broad stroke that Georgetown, as with, you know, many towns throughout the Commonwealth, it's, the policy of DOT, it's adopted statewide for communities to become complete streets.
So, when is the phase that you actually designate the streets that you want to put sidewalk?
That's part of, that is part of the prioritization plan and...
Is that the third one here, or the second?
Yeah, that's the third one.
Third one.
So, it'll actually state what projects will be implemented, their estimated cost, estimated start and completion dates, and all of that.
That would be, that would be really critical because we really could make a condition on any developer to add to this, you know, because if we have a plan.
As most planners know, in communities, this is the program you really have to join in order to optimize Mass DOT funding for road improvements. And it's just a matter of trying to make the roadways and sidewalks as accessible and user-friendly to all modes of travel.
Right. But that's what Little Hill did in my neighborhood, is they put a sidewalk from their, their entranceway to Andover Street. So, that's, it gets used a lot because, you know, we have a flat terrain there for walkers. But after that, when they get on to Andover Street, they're out in the street.
Right.
You know, it's sad, but...
Originally, there weren't very many houses down Andover Street.
Right.
But now Davis Lane, there weren't houses on West Street where I live, and all along Andover Street.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. I mean, the whole, the whole idea is to eventually network, connect as many sidewalks and build as many sidewalks. Fortunately, Georgetown's been doing that for quite a while, so there are quite a few sidewalks, and there are a lot of smaller streets that you pretty much feel safe walking along, which the vehicle traffic is slow.
About Little Hills is that they actually clean the street. They clean up debris in the spring, you know, and all the leaves and all that fall in the street. Residents don't have to take care of it, Little Hills does. It's a good deal.
John, what do we need to do?
Other than reading, and I did give everybody a black and white copy of this this evening, which is a really quick read, you can devour this in twenty to thirty minutes, and it gives you a good idea of what's involved with complete streets programs, so you can actually, you know, discuss it in an informed manner. And this, this is pretty much a PowerPoint presentation, you know, a quick, quick read on this program, and it gives you really enough information so that you can understand what it's all about. And it's this nationwide movement to, you know, make people healthier on a community by community basis. When you have safe, accessible pedestrian corridors, you know, good sidewalks, people tend to use them more, you know, not use their vehicles as much. When you have good, safe bicycle corridors within the roadways, you know, people will tend to use them more and feel safer. Yeah. I mean, you know, when you're really into bicycling today, and there are lots of people that are, you know, everybody's wearing their helmets, they're utilizing lights, LED lighting, I mean, you really wanna be seen as much as possible to anybody driving a car.
Not only that, but it's, it's the increase in population of the elderly. You know, sooner or later, you're gonna wind up in a wheelchair, it appears to me.
Yeah.
And this is, this would be great.
Yeah, you wanna be able to get from point A to point B and, you know, without any impediments, and that's really what this is all about, making as many people and as many modes of travel being able to use our right of ways.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I just hope it's not taking your time.
Well, there's a lot of things, but you know what? As long as you just stay busy, you chip away at everything, you know? I mean, there's a lot. People, you know, really don't realize how much is involved.
Are you keeping monitor his time?
He and I talk on a regular basis in that regard.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Be on top of it.
Yeah. Yeah, along with, along with everything else. Because we still have that strategic plan we gotta finish.
That's right. Thanks for reminding me. I haven't had any more inquiries from Phil, so I thought it was done.
No, no, it, it isn't, and he's still working on that, but you know what? I have that, a copy of that document, which is right here, color, document that is on the town's website.
Yeah.
And, I mean, really hits every important aspect of the town.
Right.
Relative to, you know, coming up with the next generation of planning. And you mentioned earlier the master plan that needs to be updated. You know, this has a lot of good current information that is important towards developing that update.
Yeah.
And we have a bike path meeting tomorrow night, and that'll be my first bike path meeting, and so I'm attending that tomorrow night.
At Merrimack Valley?
Yeah, no, it's gonna be here.
Here?
Yeah.
With them, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then tomorrow morning, we have our build-out analysis meeting with Merrimack Valley. Please don't forget, we, we had an economic development committee meeting...
I don't know if I'm gonna make eight o'clock.
...here on Tuesday morning at seven-thirty, and we had a full house, and we accomplished a lot of discussion having to do with economic development.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, that's super.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, things are coming together and moving along, and people seem to be getting excited, excited about all of this, and it is a springtime, so. You're gonna get excited, this is the season. Especially before Fourth of July shows up.
Right. I think before we go on to the last item, I think just to your question, you know, I do talk with John on a regular basis, and my last communication with him in terms of the big picture is I'm, I'm, I'm leaving it up to him to get up to speed, to clean the deck, to get every, to get all the files and everything ready to go, to, you know, transition into the new job, to get comfortable, and when everything feels like it's under control for him is when, and we're going to then start to tackle our big picture of the things we wanna do, but not until he gets settled. Things are going good right now. So, anything else, John?
Andrew wasn't able to attend tonight, and...
Is he okay?
Maybe, I wanna give her a call.
Okay. Let's see. So, okay, so the last item on the agenda, discuss the Harry Black Tiglian memo. So, as an update on that item, the last time the board met, the board didn't take an official vote, but everybody, you know, nodded in agreement to authorize me to simply ask Harry if he would volunteer to resign based on his inability to be able to attend the meetings. And so I did that, and Harry advised me that he wanted it in writing, which is why you have this then in your packets, which I think I'd mentioned in that first paragraph to explain why I put it in writing. After that came out, Tilly contacted me and was concerned, and Tilly, if I miss, if I say anything incorrectly, just jump in, was, was concerned with, with what had transpired. And basically, my takeaway from that was she was uncomfortable with the memo, the way it had been written in her vote and her name being on this. And so, Tilly asked if we could have another vote on that issue and, and then rewrite this memo or take her name off this memo, but, you know, clarify the vote we took. And I said, I, if a board member changes their views and has strong opinions about things even after we've taken votes and stuff, I am all for supporting that. So, I said, absolutely, we could talk about that and whatever. So, I, what I'd like to try to do, I, I, the last time I talked with Harry was before, no, the last time I talked with Harry was the day after our planning board meeting. And in that phone call, I asked him to please contact me and keep me appraised of his job status, and that I was not going to keep calling him each week to find out what was going on. So, I haven't had any personal contact with him, he didn't call me, and I don't, I don't know where he is in terms of his work, his job description right now with it changing or not. And I know Matt, I mean, I know Bob talked with him and thought he had something going on that might be different, and, but I, I just share that as backdrop, that I'd like to try, if possible, to keep this to fifteen minutes, you know, no more than that. Tilly, maybe, you know, maybe you could now, you know, share what your concerns were.
Well, I've worked with Harry for a long time, and I have witnessed his participation in town. A lot of the committees I've been on with him. And he does by far more than a three-hour meeting twice a month. He does behind-the-scenes work that's, in my opinion, I wish there were more people that could do it. He has had several jobs, and he, when he, when they did fall at the nighttime, they were shorter, like a month or two. And sometimes he would find a replacement to, to fill in on his shift, and just so he could make a meeting. He's very dedicated. I don't always agree with him, but he puts in the time, loads of energy, and God, I wish we had more volunteers like that. This town used to have that kind of pizzazz of being really interested in doing improvements toward Georgetown. And I just think that we should be more patient with him. I mean, the meetings that he has missed, I don't think would have changed anything. And one meeting, he couldn't even attend that Palmer Lane one, he was a conflict, so he couldn't be involved with that one at all. And the others, I don't see that there is such an issue. I really do stress getting an associate, because, you know, I could get sick, or somebody else could get sick in the house, or...
An alternate.
Yeah, we need that associate, they call it for a planning board. We need somebody, and, you know, you do a lot of traveling, Bob, and I think that's, I'd like to see us advertise and really push it, because, that's my thought. And I just wanna make a motion to remove my name from this. I think this is a little harsh. Some people come to the meetings and they don't even, they just fill up the seat. That wasn't with Harry. He did his homework. He, he, anybody on any committee asked him for assistance or help, he was there. So, I think due to his time in service, I mean, he did our, he was in with our master plan, he's done our open space, he's done our Community Preservation Act, he's doing the build-out with us on the committee. I mean, he, he's phenomenal for the computer, he set out, he helped Nick, he helped Howard, I mean, he's been the right hand for the planning board, and that's just my thoughts. Thank you for the turn.
No, pleasure, absolutely. So...
I just like, I mean, I, I agree with you on everything you set up until the alternate part. I think Harry is incredibly knowledgeable. I think he has forgotten more about planning than I'll ever learn. That being said, spend nine months, I would like nothing more than Harry to come back in the next meeting and to tear up this piece of paper and never have to think about it ever again. I would like nothing more than that. And Harry, if you're listening or listening tomorrow and you, you call us and say, my schedule's changed and I'm able to come back to the meetings, I, I want him here. I, I think that would be phenomenal for all of us. But unfortunately, it doesn't seem like there's an end in sight. If, you know, if he called and said, you know, I, I can't make it, but, you know, July one, I'm back, and everything's back to, to the way it was, great. I haven't heard from anyone here or from him that that's what's going to happen.
I saw him on Saturday.
Okay.
And we were talking about the gig economy, and that this is really the situation that he's in. When you're, when you're in the gig economy, you don't really get to pick and choose as much as you think. He, this is not his favorite schedule, I can tell you that. He told me that, that this is ending soon. I didn't get a date, I'm very surprised that he hasn't contacted you, because that, that would, to me, obviate this entire document, as you say. If he, if he were to attest that, yeah, I'm gonna be back at the next one, or I'll be back on date cert, then I would have no, no problem.
Tear this up and never say another word about it.
But the thing is, as you say, he hasn't contacted us, and other than me, and it was an informal, non-planning board event. I, so you've had the last communication with him, and my communication with him was the day after our planning board meeting.
Right.
And in that communication, I, I asked him, you know, specifically, I said, do you, do you know when you're gonna be done? And he basically said, no. And I said, well, can you, can you ask your employer, you know, to get a sense, to try to help us out that way? And there were reasons that he gave, and I'm forgetting what they were, but the punchline to that was no. So, I was left with just not knowing. And then you've had since the last.
Yeah, the Thursday after our meeting, we, we start, we, I, we had a meeting at his house to do the build-out, and how we're gonna do it, and he said that he thinks maybe two weeks at that time, so...
How long ago was it?
The Thursday after our meeting. Yeah, he's trying, he's, actually, he is leaving a night job. Now, from my husband working different shifts and being a union person, he's giving up a night differential...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
...to get on a day job, another company, and the union...
Oh, it's a complete job switch.
Yeah, and that's usually how it works, he never works at the same place.
That's the gig economy. He's got a gig now, the job is done in the building, Phil.
And the union has really helped him a lot, it's amazing.
And have nothing but sympathy for, for those conditions. But, you know, if a member were to, due to unforeseen circumstances, or divorce, or job loss, or what, had to move to a different town, it, it wouldn't be a bad reflection on them, it wouldn't be that we dislike them or that they, we think they're doing a bad job, it's just you no longer meet the conditions of being a planning board member, you're no longer a member of the community. So, unless something is changing and he can come back and, and attend the meetings, I, I just don't know how he's meeting the conditions of being a planning board member.
And all, and all said and done is... And all, and all said and done is he is the only one that can resign. We can't shove him off.
Oh, absolutely.
Legally, so.
I I I agree with that.
Correct. Correct.
But I don't think there's anything wrong with us making it known to him, or at least this is what, my, my only intention is to make it known to him that it would be our preference, or it would be my preference, that if if that's not changing in the near term, that he'd take that responsible course and 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 do that. But if it's, again, if his his job is changing and he can come back, I'm, I'm, can't, can't wait. That's, that's excellent. But I do think it's a detriment to the board because even if it's not, it puts pressure on the board because then people have legitimate things that come up. Sick kid or health concerns themselves, really, one person misses and it basically becomes a, not even worth having a meeting. Because now we're down to three members and at that point, it's not even worth opening, opening a public hearings at the, at that point.
When we were away, I know that there, a meeting was canceled and, I guess I did feel guilty. But not so guilty as to change my plan.
As you should.
So, so this letter says that sort of the cutoff is this Friday. And I'm wondering if we could, I mean, I, I'll reach out to Harry and see if I can get something concrete. But I'm wondering if we could do that by the seventeenth, by the time the next packet gets produced. Give him until, until the next packet gets.
So send this letter, but with the request that he get back to us by the seventeenth.
By the seventeenth, yeah.
I, I, I would like that as well. I think that's it. I mean, asking somebody for a two, essentially a two-day turnaround time is.
Well, 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 but it's not a two-day turnaround time.
I, I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, just for the record, it's, it's, it's two weeks plus two days.
Sure.
Okay.
But I don't see, we just need the information for the next packet.
Yep.
And so, whether it's today or he gets back to us on Monday or Tuesday, I'm not sure how we're.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm with, I think, the board recognizing the value that he brings to the meetings when he attends. When he doesn't attend, there's less value. And we need.
And I, I just wanna say, Tilly, Tilly, I, I, well, I just wanna be really clear and I, I, I tried in the letter to be very clear with that it's not about Harry in terms of the work he does. And I think everybody sitting here is very clearly on board with sharing the feelings that you expressed about the work that he does.
Yeah, mainly because we're volunteers. And we're, this town is suffering from volunteers. That ballot was a shame. Nobody is interested. It doesn't mean we don't like the people that are in office, to put your name down there. Get interest, competition. That's what, that's what the world, United States is all about, you know? Have a debate. We haven't had a debate in this town.
That's where I disagree with you on the alternate, because.
Associate call, alternate is CBA. Okay.
Okay. There was an open seat technically, with the, on, a, where no one ran for it.
Right.
Because Bob ran a write-in campaign of forty-six, forty-seven people, right? If there were interest on people joining the planning board, I think we just went through the, through the exercise that shows that no one's interested in joining the planning board. So to ask for someone to come, come to all the meetings, but only have voting authority on a very limited number, almost nothing, that to me is just not, not a fillable position.
That, that position in, right, in words written down looks good, but it's not practical. And it's never gonna be practical, in my opinion, for the way that you were just describing. But that, I, so I just wanted to go back though and finish that, that, I, I just wanna be really clear and I think everybody on the board is in full support of Harry the individual, the person. I think what the board, or what, what I'm talking about is not Harry the individual, but I'm talking about the board. And I'm talking about the members on the board. I'm talking about the applicants that come before the board, that they get a fair hearing with the right number of people in front of them, that the board members, if they miss a meeting, don't feel pressured, that it's okay to miss a meeting, that site plan applicants, if an applicant is missing, if a planning board member is missing, in addition to Harry, you know, that they have the right numbers of people. I'm focused on the issue of the board. In the end, it's about the board and the institution of the board. And and that's, that's all, that's the only thing I'm coming from. And it has been nine months and I, I think that is really an unusually long period of time. And I guess, when I played this one out and I think of the potential win-win scenario, I then almost asked myself, well, why wouldn't you do it in terms of the win? It just seems like a win-win to me, but this is just me. If you have someone who's willing to step in and take his seat right away to make the board whole and to take care of the issues of the board, there's a win for the board. Harry can take the associate member's position and he can attend the meetings when he's able to and he can still participate in all the board meetings, discussions, input. He can still do everything he wants to do now. And then, when the seat comes up, he can run again and he's gonna get reelected. It seems like there is a solution that's a win-win for everybody.
And Rob, let me ask you this, when, if he were to resign and there was a person appointed to fill the seat temporarily, it would come up for a vote again in May of the following year, correct?
I, I, what would happen would be the, the planning board would get together with the selectmen, it would be a joint meeting and for the purposes of appointing this person, so there'd be a discussion about him, they'd appoint him. And I think at that point in time, you have a choice. You can appoint him to fulfill the term of that person, which is what I did for Chris Rich, the selectman on the planning board. I was appointed to fulfill his term. Or you can say just fulfill the year, till the next annual town meeting, which at that point, you know, then Harry can run.
Then it becomes a, a new five-year term and.
It's a new term and Harry can run again. So as the associate member, he can still participate and do everything he's doing. When he's, when his job changes, he's, he can still do it all. We get the associate position, we get a new town, we get a new planning board member. Harry gets what he wants to do. So it was that, it was when I played that out that that just seemed like a, a solution. So, with that being said, you know, what I've heard Tilly say is she'd like to, you know, not sign this, no problem. And, what, we just changed the date on it, Matt, is that what it is? What's the date changed to for Harry?
Seventeenth.
May, May seventeenth?
Yep. I, I also appreciate something you said, Tilly, about the tone of the, of the letter. The last sentence in the second paragraph sounds almost prosecutorial. And and I was, I would hope that we could come up with a way that, there, there are hot words, lack, lack of attendance, burden, unfair, not fulfilling the agreement, technically, technically true, all, but, I, I, I just feel uncomfortable. I'm a softie, I know. I just feel uncomfortable with.
How about inability to attend?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Places unfair burden on the, on the attending four board members. And what if we just ended the sentence there?
I think so, yeah. Because that's, that's really our issue. I don't think that we've provided poor service.
Well, no, 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 no.
And is unfair to the applicants.
I, I think that is fair and accurate.
And then take out the, and is not fulfilling the agreement made with the town that elected you.
I don't think that the, that the applicants have been treated poorly. I mean, they've, they've lost Harry, they, they haven't had Harry's expertise and knowledge.
It's not that part that they're, that I'm talking about. The part I'm talking about is the vote. The part that I'm talking about is that applicants have sometimes had to cancel meetings because we didn't have enough people to go into a special permit vote and give the applicant a fair chance that they could have one negative vote.
Creates an addition, creates an additional burden on applicants.
I understand, yes, I, I do understand and.
Would you be okay with that language? Creates an additional burden on the applicants.
Okay, yes, yes. Because I, I, I mean, there have been situations when I haven't been here, but I think there may be more situations when I haven't been here that have gated something. So I mean.
I think overall, our attendance on the board has been phenomenal. I, as long as I've been there, at one time, we didn't have a quorum. I mean, that was, that's pretty good.
I, I, I think it has. I, 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 I'm only speaking for myself, but I can tell you, there have been nights where I have thought that there was something else that I needed to do on that night that was really important, that had to do with family, that because we only had a four-member board, I did not do.
You have had church and that sort of thing.
And that's, you know, so yeah, I think the board has stepped up and done a really good job.
Right.
So, would you be comfortable, Rob, with, simply put, your lack of attendance places an extra burden on the attending four board members and creates an additional burden on the applicants as well?
Oh, no problem.
Bob?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, I think words matter and and I, I very much tried to write this in as, I told you how long it took me to craft this.
God, I don't, I don't envy you, man. Do not. Painful.
So, simply put, inability to attend places extra burden on the four attending members and additional burden on applicants, period. And then the date changes to the seventeenth. And and here's what I would, here's what I would like to suggest. That I, I'll, I'll make these changes, because I have the word document. I'll get them to John, John will put it on the letterhead and then put it down in the town hall, in the police station for signatures and you don't have to go because you don't have to sign it.
Did you change the beginning of the vote? Was really an, an agreement?
Okay, so, let's see. At the planning, yeah, so, what if I, so I don't have to rewrite this whole thing. What if this first paragraph stays, but I'm trying to think how to do it, about the second.
Well, let me ask you, if we were to strike that paragraph.
Okay.
I mean, we have who's voting for it down at the bottom. Harry knows why you're giving it to him. He asked for it, so.
So maybe it's just the attending three members of the Georgetown Planning Board? Because we are gonna vote tonight.
I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, I think that the, the, the letter doesn't lose anything by just starting with the second paragraph. The Georgetown Planning Board has for some time been dealing with the inability to attend our meetings.
Oh, okay.
See what I'm saying?
Shorter's better.
Instead, instead, instead of giving the, 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 the history.
Deletions are fine with me.
I'm sorry, I know you probably spent some time on that paragraph.
No, 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 no. I, no worries with that one, that makes it easy. So that paragraph would come out, Tilly.
Okay.
So then it's just seeing the planning board and then there'd be these signatures. And only because you're a member of the board, you, you don't sign it, but your name would be there, I'm assuming. Isn't that, is that how that would go, or does, or does Tilly's name not even go on the document and the signature? I don't, I'm not trying to make a mold out of a.
No, I would just take it off. I don't wanna be on it.
You don't wanna be on it?
No.
Court, I write that?
Yeah. Tilly, I have, I, I do have one last question for you and I'm, I'm, I swear to you, I'm not trying to be prosecutorial or anything. But is there any period of time that a member could be absent where you would feel like it's just enough is enough?
That's a good question.
If any, if.
So Harry's been gone for nine months. If it was a year, would you feel this, would you still?
If, I would.
To be honest with you, if there was, there was a member who, who was late at our meetings or fell asleep during our meetings, or was doing other things than, than paying attention to the applicant, I would say, yeah, this is, this is a, but as far as that, I think this guy is too valuable. And I don't wanna give the impression out there where we're so lacking of volunteers in this town that this is how we're gonna treat him if they don't show up. And that's my thing.
But, but is there ever a period of time where it becomes appropriate that, so out of a five, you know, he has a five-year term? If he was absent for a year?
I think I answered your question.
Well, I didn't get it because, I mean, the question is, if, if I, you know, run for reelection as a write-in candidate and give forty-seven votes and never show up again.
Take Harry out of the picture.
And I, and I never show up again.
There's absolutely nothing, nothing we can do without.
At what point do you say, boy, we really need that warm body in that seat? It's not Harry, it's Bo, it's Watts.
But there's no purpose, there's no end of it. We don't have the jurisdiction to, to do that. The, the only way that any member is.
Well, I mean, we could, we could just request, request that you formally resign so that we can fill a position with someone who can attend. It, it's just an attendance issue.
It's Harry's decision.
Exactly.
It's not us.
We're asking, and all we're doing is we're asking to make the decision, suggesting that he make the decision.
It is Harry's decision, but if we don't ask, if we don't.
Well, I was, to me, I was, you know, when he, when he first brought it up a couple of meetings ago and we nodded our head in agreement, if, if he, everything he expressed at the board, I'm sure he told Harry and Harry accepted, you know, what he was saying, but it's still up to him, Harry. So it's, it's his thought. There's nothing that, that will, you can't force him, you can't twist his arm.
But I, I think, I, but I, I still, I, I just, I haven't heard the answer to, to Matt's question though. Is there any point in time when a planning board member, in terms of policy, comes to not attending, that it's no longer okay? Or can a planning board member get elected and not show up for a year and that's okay? Is there any point in time for any planning board member where that lack of attendance matters?
Of course not, it's, it's not okay. But there is absolutely no jurisdiction we have.
So if it's not okay, where's the cutoff point?
And it's not only us.
Where's the cutoff, where would that not okay point be?
I don't know. I can't.
Well, that's an important question.
But, but Tilly, if.
I don't, I can't answer it.
If, if he responds to this by saying, I do not resign.
Okay, well, then we have our answer, right?
We're done.
Your wish.
But, but we've done our job as a planning board.
To, to proactively suggest to him that if he can't make the meetings, we would suggest that you resign and when you can make the meetings, run again and join up, join our little band here.
It's, it's already.
And, and, and the thing is, I don't mean it, I really, you can tell, I'm not comfortable with, with any of this. But I, I think that, you know, in the name of the town, in the name of being proactive and, and, and being responsible for the, for what we have to do.
Harry lives five houses down from me. I, th- there's nobody that I would less like to be, have an enemy and I, I, this is not about, 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 about him.
Totally not.
It's not about him.
I, I just, at some point, I.
Well, it, everything has to do.
And all we're doing is we're asking him to consider this and.
Well, I, I just, like, I, I, I'm not gonna repeat my statement, but I just am not in agreement with it.
That's right.
And that's it. Uh, you guys can do whatever.
I'm not trying to change your mind. I was just, I, I was curious if there, if there was a condition and.
Yeah.
So, with that, we have the revisions to be made as, as understood and look for a motion to modify the memo as discussed. The motion to that effect.
Uh, one question. Okay, move, move the question, move the question. However.
Well, that sounded heavy.
Never mind. The, the one question I have is, this is undated, what date are we gonna put on it? Today?
It's dated May second, so.
Oh, I see, yes, you're right.
We will change it to tonight.
To tonight.
Yep, it'll be May tenth. Good catch. So, I need a second.
Second.
To the motion that Bob made. And it's been seconded, motion has been made and it's been seconded to. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to authorize Rob to revise the May second memorandum as discussed. And... I guess that's it. And then to sign, to be signed by those planning board members thereafter. Uh, any discussion?
Only, only discussion is this, we're gonna date it.
Yep.
And then we're gonna sign it tomorrow and then it'll get to him. So I mean, we're gonna date it today.
Date it today.
But it's not gonna be winging its way to him today or tomorrow.
If you want me to run downstairs, I can.
Well, I, what I'd, what I'd rather, what I'd rather do is this. We date it today. John, I'll, I'll make the revisions to the word document tomorrow when I get into work. I'll get it to John, John will get it back. John will make the changes tomorrow and then this will go into the police department for us to go sign. We'll get notifications that it's ready to be signed. But in the meantime, I can call Harry or...
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea.
And I'll, I'll just tell him what transpired tonight in the same way I did after the last meeting.
In, in, in my, many of my cases, I'm able to sign documents with a dash, S dash, and then my name typed out. I would be comfortable doing that in this situation if you guys would be comfortable with that, but...
What's that?
So instead of a physical...
Electronic signature?
Electronic signature?
Oh.
That way, you know, I just send an email to John. I, I authorize you to provide my electronic signature on the document.
You know, you know, if I could just say, I'm not a member, but you know, just...
You basically are.
You know, if you're... I, I wanna put some analogies together because it isn't about the person. But say you're gonna fly to the mall and you need five astronauts to get there and maybe a staff member, right? The person can't make it, okay, for the flight. You gotta get another astronaut in, onboard or you can't make it because you need five people, right? If you're a member of a Lions Club and you only have one member in the Lions Club, you're not going to get as much done as you would with five members or ten members, you know? Everybody has to carry their weight in every organization and everybody has to be in attendance. In this particular case, it's an elected position. You have obligations to be in attendance for that elected position. I think one of the problems is, is that it is an elected position. If it was an appointed position, you'd probably have a lot more interest for a lot of people to even think about running for office. It's a monumental roadblock.
They still have a problem with the appointed though.
Yeah, but you know, it's just, it, it, you know, it's just the former government and, you know, that it's an elected position. I mean, really, I, I, you know, one out of ten people may wanna run for office, but five out of ten may really think about being appointed. You know, it's a lot different. And I think you can get a lot, you know, I've seen communities where it's appointments and you get a lot of qualified people that are appointed and they have the time to be appointed, to go to that one meeting, expose their bio, their biographies. But to actually run for office, that's, that's a major task that a lot of people don't have the time for.
There's many reasons why people don't, don't resume for appointments. And, and in my view, what I have witnessed, you know, is from these other meetings, is volunteers aren't treated as nice as they could be. And, and, you know, it, it's not a paid job. We're not out there for blood. And by far, most of them don't have any other agenda than to do good for the town. And, but I've seen conservation had a, had a real issue. They, they couldn't have a quorum for months because they couldn't get appointed.
You know what, though? It is the same everywhere. Don't, don't really feel you're, you're...
Yeah.
The only community suffering.
Lack of volunteers is, is, it's countrywide. Just look at the poll, just look at voting.
Excellent book that was about, put out about ten years ago. It's called Bowling Alone.
Yeah, bowling?
Bowling Alone.
Bowling Alone?
It's how civic engagement and across the board, boards, government, rotary clubs, masons, whatever you wanna, out there, it's just...
Ten years ago they had it?
Yeah, it did, the, the, the percentages of people doing these things have just fell through the floor and it's only gotten worse since then, so it's, it's across the country.
It's an important book, I, you know, people that have read it rave about it because it is a societal problem.
Have to look for that one.
Nobody wants, nobody wants to participate, you know?
I, you know, you know how I, well, we can talk forever about this stuff.
Yeah, we're, we're risking having fun here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I would, I would just, I would just say, I would just say, I think there are a lot more people that would like to run, but that do not feel or think they have the time with everything else they're doing in their lives just to keep their head above water.
Yeah, you know, I know people that, you know, will attend a meeting and, you know, they have all kinds of assumptions. And I always tell them, come back, you know, and get a feel for what we're doing. You're gonna see, it's a lot of hard work, but it's fulfilling work. And a lot of times that brings them into the process and then they become devoted to it, lifelong devotees or, you know, a good chunk of years.
What we need is a good town scandal. That gets me, that gets me...
Hey, hey, we, we have one going on in Washington.
I'll work on that.
Anyways, anyways. So we, did we vote? We didn't.
We did not.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So there you have the vote and I'll make these changes. I'll get them to John, John will get the document downtown hall. I will send this draft to Harry without the signatures on it, just so he has it immediately. And I'll call him.
Can I bring up one more topic before we adjourn?
Please.
Are we ready? It's that time of year where we may wanna try to figure out July and August meeting dates. I had a couple of meetings with developers and they're trying to, um, schedule their summer months. So for July, I have, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth would be the second and fourth. I don't know if we wanna meet once that month. I don't, I don't know what the typical schedule is.
In July?
Yeah.
The twelfth and the twenty-sixth are the two dates?
Yeah. And people might be thinking about vacations on the board, so we're not gonna have a quorum or anything. You may wanna just really start thinking about it. We don't have to make decisions tonight.
I think, I think what you just reminded me then is what I need to do and probably what we all should do is start to get a handle on our summer vacations and, and start to communicate those.
Agreed.
Could you, could you add to the agenda for next, um, just summer schedules, scheduling? And that'll remind people to start thinking about that. Cause I, I have to talk to my wife about those things.
Same here.
So that'll, does that sort of get us going in that direction?
Yeah.
Anything else, man?
Uh, that would be it for now. We do meet again in two weeks.
All right. I should adjourn. All in favor?
I don't forget about the twenty-second meeting. I'll, I'll send out reminders.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I got that in mind. That's with the selecting.
That's in addition to our, this...
Need to discuss?
The moratorium, the potential for...
Oh, yeah, the, the marijuana.
Yeah, we have, we have a simple moratorium that, you know...
We're done. Thank you.